Okay, folks, it is 6:00 PM and today is August, Tuesday, August 23rd, 2022. We're in the council chambers in the city of Platteville and I call this regular meeting to order. Colette, we'll start with roll call.
Hop. Hop.
Here.
Parrot.
Here.
Casper.
Here.
Dos.
Here.
Killian.
Here.
Nichols.
Here.
Arts. And Jason is going to be a little late. He is one of our flag football coaches and is distributing uniforms, I believe, or whatever we call them. Is that right, Rob?
Yes, it is.
Bob, that's, yeah, okay.
New jerseys and everything.
New jerseys and everything. So, all right, the first thing on our agenda tonight, and the only action item on our agenda tonight, is the consideration of the consent agenda. And on that consent agenda, we can approve it all at once, or we can pull things as you want. Council minutes from August the 9th, the regular meeting, payment of bills. I have no appointments to boards or commissions tonight. We have a temporary Class B to serve fermented malt beverages to the Platteville J.C.'s at Legion Park for Friday, September 9th to Sunday, September 11th. That would be Dairy Days. And we have a temporary Class B to serve fermented malt beverages to St. Mary's Church at 400 Pitt Street. That's the Broski Event Center on Sunday, September 18th, from 11:00 to 4:00 for the St. Mary's Festival. There are one and two-year operator licenses to sell and serve alcohol as in your packet. And there's a street closing permit for Hickory Street between West Pine Street and Greenwood Avenue for St. Augustine's University Parish Black Party on Wednesday, September 7th, from 1:00 PM to 9:00 PM.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Agenda. We have a motion by Ken and a second by Kathy to approve the consent agenda. We'll vote, Colette.
Okay, Hop.
Yes.
Parrot.
Yes.
Casper.
Yes.
Dos.
Yes.
Killian.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Motion carries.
So next on our agenda are citizens' comments, observations, and petitions, if any. And I've already warned him, but I'm going to invite Paul Erickson, who's the Chief Information Officer for UW Platteville, to come to the podium and tell us about great activities, and particularly one great activity that's coming up at UWP.
Thank you. I didn't know I was going to speak here tonight, so I only have 40 minutes prepared. Now, I just wanted to invite the chamber and the city to our grand opening of Seska Centennial Hall. That's September 1st. It's a Thursday at 1:00 PM. We'll have a ribbon cutting and then the tours afterwards. It's a $55 million engineering building. It's absolutely spectacular. Actually, I just came from it. It's unbelievable what that's going to do for the university and do for this region, and hopefully do for the state for engineering. So we really would like to have, you know, invite you if you're able to. And if not, we are going to have more tour dates throughout the fall. I know we're going to be looking at some homecoming days as well, but we hope you can get through that. I know some of you have been there through some parts of the construction, but the finished project is something to behold.
And so, Paul, do you know, did it get LEED certification? Do you know if, are they still working on?
Yes.
Still working on it?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Well, great, great event. There are students in town already that I know the RAs and residence hall staff are here. I know the football team is here. I suspect there's, I have not heard the band.
Not quite yet. The band reported a day of leave, so yes. So it's fun to see activity again. We're looking forward to the new year.
All right, anybody with questions, Paul? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Any other comments or observations? It's obviously dangerous to come to a meeting when you get called on.
That's right.
Howard, would you like to give us an update on streets?
Actually, first, I would like to announce some very good news. The, the three water wells that we have in Platteville have been tested for PFAS, which are a key contaminant nationwide. And our three wells came back as no detect, no detectable level of PFAS in any of the three wells.
Good news.
Very good news. Some of the other things that are going on, we have West Main Street that is progressing very slowly.
So is it open or closed?
It is open to one lane and tomorrow it will continue to be open for one lane of traffic while we close Longhorn Drive to do our sanitary sewer crossing of Longhorn Drive. That will take place all day tomorrow and then Longhorn will be back open again after that.
So we can. So will College Drive be signed that Longhorn is closed? Because I've had people calling me already saying, you have West Main Street closed, so I was going to skirt through the university, then I get over to Longhorn and it's closed.
We have, we have signage that was put there today that says, "Road closed ahead" at the intersection of College and Greenwood Avenue.
Perhaps we should have it at College and Main also. Because, because what I've seen, since I live on that side of town, is 18-wheelers who last week came down and the road was closed on West Main, and they ended up backing up and turning around in Stonebridge, which can't be easy if you have an 18-wheeler. And, and then today, somebody said similar. They got over, you know, they were like, okay, I'm not going to go through the one-way, since the one-way appears to be going west, not going east. So they took the bypass through the university and then said, now I'm, yeah. So I think we need signage at Main and College Drive. It says Longhorn is closed too. And how long is it supposed to be closed?
Longhorn Drive is only going to be closed tomorrow.
Just one day?
Yes, it will be back open after tomorrow.
Okay. And then how's Gridley and Hickory?
Gridley and Hickory is progressing very well. They've done water sanitary sewer and they're finishing up storm sewer in the next day or two.
And what's their deadline to be complete?
It's in October. Cedar Street is also progressing. Tomorrow, there's going to be one lane of traffic flagged on North Chestnut Street at Chestnut and Cedar intersection to do, to do a water tie-in, water and sanitary sewer tie-in. And that will complete the water sanitary sewer. We still have some storm sewer remaining on that street before that one will do the gravel and everything. That's also another October completion date.
And the completion date for the sewer project and for West Main?
Completion date for West Main is supposed to be this Friday. If they do not, which we all can pretty much predict they won't, there is, there are liquidated damages that will be assessed to the contractor. Last week, I sent them a letter warning them, warning them that such liquidated damages shall be enforced. So, yeah.
And then the sewer projects.
Sewer project completion will be in November. But we are working hand in hand with the university to work through a lot of those issues. They've been very cooperative and working with us. They've allowed us to, allowed the contractor to use a portion of, I believe it's Lot 26, which is next to the fieldhouse for staging area. It's going to be part of the area that's under construction later anyways, but they're working with us on that. So it's, it's very cooperative like that.
And do we send any press releases or updates when we send it out and put it on Facebook and stuff? Do we ever send it to Paul at UW Platteville so that if there are things that need to be, that faculty and staff or students need to be advised of, that he can post it through their webpage, through their Facebook page, and through their email system?
Send it to my contacts in UW Platteville facilities.
So do you get it, Paul? But.
Thanks.
All right. Any other comments, observations, and petitions? Eric, how was mine day?
It was surprisingly well attended despite the rainy weather.
Okay, any others? Then we'll move on to reports. There's only two tonight. Committee Safe Routes, Community Safe Routes Committee, and Jason is not here. Did anybody have any questions on that? Otherwise, Museum Board, Eileen.
Eric is here and he can add anything he'd like to, but for everyone, this wonderful newsletter came out in the last week, so there's a ton of information in here. I would just like to highlight that, of course, the historic reenactment is coming up on September 9th through the 11th. That's in the same time that Dairy Days happens in Platteville. It's a wonderful event. There is a $25,000 Challenge Grant that is being started September 1st to December 1st to fund a feasibility study for the capital campaign, which is involving the whole campus of the, of the museums and updating the look and, and quite frankly, the efficiency sometimes of the way we get around that campus. There's ice cream at the museum now, Driftless Ice Cream, which was, is made by UWP students and sold at the museum store. So you can go in anytime and get that. And let me tell you, there are some wonderful flavors like Honey Sunflower Butter. That's just one, but there are eight, I think, eight different choices. So Eric, I don't know if you have anything else you'd like to add or not. You probably need a microphone if you do, but, okay, great. So check out the museum. There's just a heck of a lot going on.
Let's move on then to our information items for tonight. The first of which is Financial Advisor, RFP.
Yeah, and this is more just kind of an update on the process and where things currently stands. Just wanted to keep the council up to speed. So just recapping, we had three firms that essentially submitted proposals to wish to be the financial advisor for the city of Platteville. That was Baker Tilly Municipal Advisors LLC, Ellers Public Finance Advisors, and Robert W. Barrett and Company Incorporated Advisors. So what happened is to review the three firms and provide a formal recommendation to the common council. A subcommittee has been formed consisting of the city manager, the administration director, Nicola Mauer, and council members Killian and Nichols. The first round of interviews were conducted on Monday, August 8th, and Tuesday, August 9th, with the three firms. We were able to narrow it down to two. So the recommendation that came from the committee is that Ellers Public Finance Advisors and Robert W. Barrett Incorporated are going to be asked to actually come in front of the council and do presentations. So what I'm going to be working on next is reaching out to all three of the firms, obviously the one that was not selected to move forward. Again, all firms did a really great job in interviewing. The committee just felt that the two firms, both Ellers and Robert W. Barrett, kind of brought a little bit more to the table as far as experience and just the overall presentation. So what will be happening is I'll be reaching out to those two firms and we'll be looking at the month of September with our two meetings to have each firm come at one of those meetings and provide about a 20-minute, 20 to 25-minute presentation to the council where there'll be an opportunity for you to ask questions. What I will be doing after this meeting is essentially sending each council member the RFPs. So we'll send those to you formally. You'll get a paper version, so you can kind of review those in anticipation of the meetings. And then once I know who's coming, we'll select that. What will happen then is we'll do the two interviews in September, and then the subcommittee will kind of reconvene again, talk about the presentations that they occurred, and then I'll make a formal presentation, kind of our recommendation to the council, probably at the, in a meeting in October. And then it'll be up to kind of the council's pleasure as to which direction you want to go, and we'll go from there. So, any questions?
Questions?
Are they both coming the same night?
No. So we are going to try to separate it so that you listen to one and then you have another one. So we'll see.
We won't have 40 minutes of.
Correct.
Advisors.
Yeah.
Might be a little.
We're going to try to be nice, so.
Any other questions? Okay, the next information item on our agenda is the DNR stewardship grants. Howard and Adel.
Thank you. Back in April, Resolution 2209 authorized city manager to submit requests to DNR for grants for the Mount View Park Trail and Main Street Trail Connection. We also submitted those for DOT grants. The DOT grant would have been 80/20, but they are not funding those grants. DNR grant is a 50/50 grant. And last week, we received notification from the DNR that both have been tentatively selected for grant funding. Official award is done after completion of the review and approval process, and in this case, it also has to be approved by the Joint Finance Committee. This notification indicated that DNR had 129 applications requesting more than $30 million in assistance. DNR would like to know as soon as possible if we are no longer interested in receiving these so that they can go, go to other grant applicants. When we submitted the DNR grant requests in spring, we hadn't really seen the full impact of inflationary costs. We had an opportunity for the DOT projects to revise some of our budgets. And so we did that for both of these for the DOT. The, we were unable to amend those for the DNR. So based on the original budgets, DNR approved 50% of those, which means that it would be city responsibility either through, through city tax funding or through fundraising or other means to come up with the remaining amounts of money. Originally, we were hopeful that we would receive from both grants to reduce the overall impact to our residents. You know, it's a wonderful thing for us to receive near, nearly one and a quarter million dollars in grant funding, but we need to compare that with our other financial obligations. We have met with members of Platteville Community Arboretum and reaching out with DNR. The, the DNR did say that we do, we do not have to take both. We can do one or the other. We can select one or the other. We can get our local match through local tax money or fundraising assistance. The other is that these grant monies expire at, on July 30th, 2025. And for good cause, they can do a one-year extension. So we could, in fact, look at splitting up projects over multiple years in order to get the funding for these. The other possibility is that we could, in fact, reduce the scope of these projects. For example, these, these trails include such things as lighting in addition to the paving. So it would look like the regular PCA trail. If we decided not to do lighting, then that would reduce the scope, for example, and it may reduce the grant, but it would also reduce the city's responsibility. There are other things that we could do to, to reduce scope if that's what we wanted to do. In the end, it is the council's decision whether to accept one or both grant awards and to give us direction on how to do the cost for any that we do accept.
Adam, do you have further information you'd like to share?
Yeah, so I think obviously there's a lot of options for, you know, the council to consider in this. So number one, there's no, obviously, decision that is being made tonight. And I think the conversation that we had with the PCA is really right now, we are kind of in kind of fact-finding and options and consideration mode. So we're looking at different scenarios that could be done in regards to, as kind of Howard indicated. You know, we've talked with the DNR. There does seem to be a willingness to look at some alternatives, some options. With PCA as well, those were kind of the conversations is, you know, is there the potential that they could do some outside fundraising or look into that? Those are certainly options as well. Also talking with kind of Cindy Tang, definitely with PCA and with Inspired Communities. You know, the conversation is potentially could be look at trying to set up some meetings, not only with the DNR, but with the DOT. Looking at specifically, you know, with this, there certainly is a want from our community to have increased trails and improved trails. It just, again, always comes down to a cost consideration. So some of the other things we would look at as well is specifically with the Main Street Trail. That is in TIFF number seven. So that is something that we can kind of do some due diligence on. I've already looked into that. Some of the things you have to consider, though, with that is TIFF number seven is financially supported by TIFF number five. So any additional debt that we're going to put on TIFF number seven, we'd have to run some calculations. It doesn't mean that it's impossible. It's just something that we have to look at. Because obviously, when we're already receiving financial support from another TIFF district, the last thing we want to do as a city is put additional burden on that TIFF district by adding costs. But I think overall, there's a lot of things that we can look at and try and bring back to the council for consideration. To Howard's point, the only thing that we are running is, obviously, the DNR does want to have a decision soon. Because as he indicated, there were about 129 applicants that, you know, put in projects for this. So if it comes to the point where we feel as a city and as a council that this is just financially feasible, we obviously want to be fair to those other entities that potentially could do it. But I think as we've all talked about, we want to make sure we do our due diligence because the last thing we want to do is lose out on about $1.2 million of possible grant funding, so.
So my understanding is that part of the grant for the Mount View Trail included some hazardous waste cleanup.
Yes.
And so I guess I would like to hear that we are pursuing, I mean, I'm not sure that that's inappropriate. I mean, it's a hazardous waste situation with the roaster pile there. There was a roaster pile. That was a mine site. And so there was some reclamation done in the mid-'80s that is now leaching, but that's really not a trail issue. That's really a roaster pile issue. So we, you know.
Right.
While the DNR wants to know as soon as possible, I don't think it's, I think it would be irresponsible for us to rush a decision when there are this many
factors. Absolutely.
Factors to look at.
Yeah, absolutely. And those are some of the conversations we have with PCA as well was, you know, if, as we start trying to set up meetings with the DNR and the DOT to kind of flesh this out, looking at, okay, we understand, as we talked about, there is a roaster pile issue. Does that really fall into this grant or can that be, you know, subsided? And that's a further conversation with either, you know, possibly whether it's, you know, environmental remediation grants or different things that we can go after, that would be an opportunity for them. You know, the same conversation, both trails have specific lighting. That is a significant portion of the cost. That is a large expense when you're lighting trails, and that was some of the conversation back and forth with PCA is, you know, if this is something that gets the paving done, do we look at, you know, possibility of future doing that? Or just consider that these portions of the trail just don't have light, and it is what it is. Those are all kind of the scenarios we're going to kind of run now over the next couple of weeks to start looking at options and scenarios that we then can present back to you as a council and kind of make a formal decision on what makes sense as we're starting to craft the budget and looking at capital improvement, which is going to come next. It's all pieces of the puzzle. I'm trying to get them to fit.
Okay, questions? Bob Hundhausen, who's the current president of PCA, is in the audience. Bob, do you want, do you have anything you want to say? Because we would ask you to come to the microphone. Are you here just to listen? Okay.
It's just something about hazardous, hazardous waste. That's what you said, something in the trails.
Right. At, at Mount View Park, that was a mine site. And a roaster pile are the tailings that they took out of mines. So in the '80s, a lot of those piles of tailings were subject to reclamation initiatives. And so what I said was, now this covering this stuff that they put over it is kind of failing. So that if you go down on that trail, you might see red.
We'll see.
Red.
Red orange.
Streams or, I don't know.
Seizing.
Red drainage or something like that. And that's, that's not really a trail issue. It's that the cover, that the remediation on that roaster pile is an issue. And that will be an issue whether you do anything with the trail or not. It is an issue.
Right.
Right. And so when they built the trail grant, they thought, well, we'll just put that in and we'll just get that taken care of with the trail. Well, it's really not. You know, so the question is, should there, should there be different money that would cover that kind of remediation rather than trail money?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, that's probably right. It's got to get fixed.
Question, what did they do with the rest of the roaster piles that were along 151 years ago? Or other city that they managed to remediate? Did they, did they haul them away and bury them somewhere or what did they do?
Actually, part of that project that Barb was talking about, they actually consolidated a lot of those piles in the one location. So, so I'm not sure where all of those piles were, but, but they did, in fact, haul smaller roaster piles from other locations and put them in the one location.
At Mount View Park.
At Mount View Park and put a clay cap on top of it so that it's not supposed to leach, but over 30 to 40 years, whatever, however long it was, you know, things happen.
Cubic yards, are we talking about?
I, I don't know.
Okay.
I don't know. And we're, I, I, in the last couple of days, I've been trying to find somebody who remembers when this happened and may have had, in fact, Ken, I'm going to call Roger Higgs, because I'm wondering if Roger knows anything about.
He might know.
He might know something about this roaster pile.
I do know that cleanup.
Might know.
Who?
Tom Hunt. Used to be employed at University Farm.
Right.
My effort was also a part of cleaning up the creek down there, and they, they plant a trout. And the trout are actually naturally reproducing now without the environmental damage of the old roaster piles. Well, but they are. So I just wanted to, cubic yards, how much are we talking about hauling out of here and getting rid of, you know, burying properly, I guess?
Or whatever, right. But I mean, yeah, so this is a, this is a historic problem. That.
Well, I mean, you can kind of get in, you can kind of get a indication off of the, off of the map that's enclosed. There's a dashed line on the, on the map that's enclosed here where this roaster pile exists. I'm not sure how deep it is to be able to get a cubic yard. I'm not sure how deep it is to be able to get a cubic yard. But yeah, I mean, you can kind of see how, how large of an area that is compared to say the, you know, a portion of the trail around Mountview Park.
We still have an open mine up behind Jefferson. Still an open mine entrance there. I know there was some years ago where they fenced around some backyards.
I'm not aware of that still being there.
Is that the one the water was flowing out?
Yeah, and they had some, they had some fencing around it years ago. I was just going to say we just dumped it back in, but it's not open.
Okay, so we'll get more information. Ken?
I have a side question. Are there any funds coming up as far as streets? Streets, building streets.
The.
Some and we didn't get those and
Right.
Anything else?
There, the, the other 2023 to 2027 BIL funding. That award is supposed to take place anytime in the next two to three weeks. The, their website says late August to mid September, so.
Is that the industry park one plus?
No.
Now, the industry park one was this year. This would be more.
This would be the ones like the East Main Street project and some of those other ones that we talked about.
But not, but not anything in general for streets. Little bit for East Main.
Well, I mean, I, I put in requests for all of the projects that are in our current 2023 to 2027. CIP. East Main Street is probably the one that, that if we get any money, that'll probably be the one that we get money for.
That's one by the present fire station?
By the fire station, yes.
So on May 24th, the council went on record as looking at Jefferson, Grace, Soden, Henry and Division, One Block of Union, Jewett, Camp and Seventh. As well as the East Main Street from Water to Broadway. So that would be, I, I don't remember what the total amount was.
Had those a few million dollars worth, but.
Yeah, one point, 1.3 million, more than that, because there was water and sewer in it.
Well, the water and sewer portions are not paid for by this DOT grant, but yes.
But I think that the other one was almost 5 million, actually, 4.9 million, I think for just streets, for all of those or something.
That's, sounds about right.
Yeah. But we just haven't heard on that, that, that was the building or infrastructure law.
Yes, the bipartisan infrastructure law, BIL. As I said.
We're here in what, two, three weeks?
According to their website, they're saying that the awards will be announced late August to mid September. As far as I know, at that point, then we go back to annual grant request cycles and it would only be for specific categories of streets, the functional classifications of streets. sharing, I'm.
Will come from, the funding will come from taxpayers and revenue sharing?
The, if we do not get any funding from, from this round of grants, we have the opportunity to request additional grants. But otherwise, if we don't get any grant funding, then it's the same way that we've always done it through borrowing and
Taxes.
And taxes, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
Patty? Um, just a question about the DNR grants. What, is there any stigma that comes back on the city if you're awarded a grant and you decline it? Um, does that hinder the next application if they say, oh, here they come and they're not going to take the money or?
Supposedly not, but. I wouldn't, yeah, I mean, it, it has, it has a small impact, I would say. I mean, it, it depends. I think it depends on what the reasoning is. If, if we showcase that, you know, a lot of it, when we explained it was we were trying to do this in a way that was the least impact to taxpayers as possible. So that's why we had, you know, the DOT and then we followed up with the DNR. Again, you know, we're related that we were able to get 1.2 million. It comes down to whether or not financially we can handle that. And if we can't, you know, yeah, if that makes the DNR upset, we get it, but that's also part of, you know, we have to make some, we're not always going to make decisions that are in the best interest. So, you know, we have to pass, we have to pass. That's play roles.
Hey, um, well then we'll hear more next time about that. Next then on our agenda is the 2023, 2027 Capital Improvement Plan. This is not a budget.
Nope, I'm gonna, you're going to reiterate that multiple times. So everybody understands this is a plan. So obviously in 2021, the city of Platteville rolled out a comprehensive capital improvement planning process. The comprehensive CAP is a vital tool for Platteville to utilize in planning for capital improvements over multiple years. It allows city staff, the city sponsored organizations and the common council room for forward thought and discussion, better prepare Platteville for change and create opportunities that may otherwise be overlooked. Due to the city of Platteville continually facing increasing expenditures and limitations on revenue, the creation of a long range planning is key to the city's success. The benefits of creating a comprehensive CIP are it assists in making better decisions on how Platteville is spending resources in coming years, providing a way to plan financially for infrastructure projects and equipment purchases. It creates a public document to obtain not only community support, but grant support, keep citizens informed on current needs and future projects and is always seen positively by our crediting and rating agencies and municipal advisors who, when conducting long range financial forecasting. City manager intern Carol Swain, who is in attendance, has been instrumental in assisting department directors and the city manager on the creation of the 2023 to 2027 CIP. I'm sure he is dreaming these spreadsheets and everything else in his sleep. He has done an amazing job in kind of working and I think it's been a great project for him to kind of learn all of the multitudes of intricacies that go into this project. So the process heavily kickstarted in June of 2022 and multiple meetings, discussions and revisions occurred during July and August and are still occurring now as we continue to look at this. So again, the budget fiscal impact, the 2023 to 2027 City of Platteville Capital Improvement Plan coincides with the annual budget process is the first step. I want to iterate again to council members and the community, the CIP is a planning document and doesn't officially guarantee all projects within the plan will be able to be funded. When the, what the plan provides is a comprehensive guidance analysis to showcase projects and initiatives the city of Platteville would like to undertake and provides a financial breakdown of the various mechanisms to achieve these projects. If the 2023 to 2027 City of Platteville Capital Improvement Plan is adopted by the common council, city staff will then start the analysis of the financial impact of the 2020, 23 CIP projects will have on the city of Platteville's operating budget. The game plan is this analysis will be presented to the common council during the Tuesday, October 4th special common council meeting, along with formal recommendations from the city manager. So the game plan here is I'm going to walk council members through the projects identified by city staff within the CIP. And then obviously we're recommending the adoption of the 2023 to 2027 City of Platteville Capital Improvement Plan. So what you have obviously in front of you, either in hard copy or on the computer, is the first draft of this CIP. The homework assignment that essentially I'm giving council members is we essentially have three weeks roughly till our next meeting. What I would like you to do is kind of look through this information. If you have specific questions, reach out to me. If you would like to set up, I did this a couple of times last year with individual council members where if it would make more sense, I'll sit down with you individually and we can kind of go over department by department. It's kind of up to your pleasure. But what I at least would like you to do is kind of look through this document, see where it is. But the game plan I thought tonight was to kind of go briefly through more of the summary sections, give an opportunity for any of the department directors to kind of iterate any of the information I'm giving. Kind of open up the floor for questions, but obviously if there's more detailed questions, the thought processes, we can kind of sit down either with myself and the department director and we can kind of go over that. But that's obviously up to you guys as a council. So if you look at the plan, kind of what I wanted to start was on what has been labeled as page one. So that would be the summary of funds if you're looking in your CIP documents. So what you can see here is from 2023 to 2027, working with staff, we came up with essentially multiple projects that each specific department area would like to look at. So as you can see, that's general government, our police department, our department of public works, water and sewer, park and recreation, our library, our museum, our fire, our taxi bus and our airport. As you can see, each individual year kind of showcases the overall, I guess, requests that you would say are in here or the projects and the cost. And then above that is the funding sources. So as you can see, it breaks it down. So there's capital project levy. So that is essentially, we would be going out and levying that as taxes. That would be the tax equivalent that would be needed in order to cover those projects. Then there is specifically geo bond proceeds. So that is debt that we would be going out and borrowing in order to accomplish funding some of those initiatives. Grants are essentially what we're looking to try to get either. So some of those you'll see are an example could be either, you know, it could be the fire station, could be projects that we're going for, could be street projects, et cetera. Other sources are essentially either, you know, that could possibly be money that we have on hand. That also could be working with other organizations through fundraising, could be a multitude of options there. And then we have water revenue bonds and sewer revenue bonds, which essentially is directly related to water and street project, water and sewer projects. So that is the bondy, the revenue bonds that we do that is then paid back by the rates that we set for the utilization of water and sewer charges. So what you can kind of see here in the first round, if you look at 2023 to 2027, again, this number is not meant to scare anyone. It is just the reality and kind of to bridge it. There is about $79 million worth of projects that potentially could be done in this city. A lot of that does have to do with deferred roads, which I think as we all know, we're speaking to the choir. That has been an issue, not only that impacts us, that impacts every municipality that you can see. But essentially this is what we asked, what I asked department directors to do was go through their departments and look at what are some of the things that we should be doing. Not necessarily meaning that we can fund those things, but it provides a comprehensive list so that as council members, when you're talking to constituents about why is this park not being done? Well, here's the reason why is because we have a capital improvement plan and here's the list of projects. And currently right now, that's here. Same thing with streets. So this again, just kind of provides a comprehensive list of all the things that in a perfect scenario with funding sources, this is how we would do it. What's going to happen in the budget process is we're going to look and see, can we do that? And obviously come back to you with recommendations, but this document allows us to kind of keep tabs on those projects that we should be doing so that we don't lose that list and kind of wonder, okay, what are we doing in this department? What are we doing in that? So what you can see here on page two and three is just kind of some graphical information that shows you the varying sources of funding. And then starting on page four is where we're kind of going to get a little bit more into the nuts and bolts of each department. So page four is general government. So what you can see from 2023 to 2027, we have a list of varying projects. So the first one that you'll see on here is city hall phase three renovations. So what that is, is that is particularly focusing on the downstairs office area that currently houses Jody is our communication specialist and our human resource department. As you have seen in the past couple of years, we have made some amazing renovations and upticking improvements to the city hall building. We haven't done that to those downstairs areas. So that's something that again, for kind of overall aesthetics for the office and as well as just maintaining employee morale, we want to make sure that our employees all have kind of the similar functions and similar office spaces. And also gives us an opportunity, obviously, to update and use those spaces to the maximum ability. So that's particularly what those two projects are looking at. Then we have the silly city hall elevator control boards. As you can see, we have an elevator, so we kind of have a duty to fix that. In order to be ADA compliant, we need to be able to get people up into the second floor. We have an issues for the past couple of years now with that elevator. So the, you know, the bell has been wrong or it's, we're due. So we have to repair that. So that is specifically taking care of that cost. The incubator is specifically looking at needing to do a parking lot update. As you guys know, the incubator was built in 1997. We just last year did some pretty significant improvements to the inside of the building. Particularly now, this is looking at kind of updating the outside. So the parking lot has some needs that need to be maintained there. One of the things we want to look at, and again, with contingency accounts, this obviously is budgetary availability, but it would make sense to start to create a contingency account for the auditorium. One of the things that we've talked about is anybody that tours our city hall, walks into that auditorium, it is an amazing amenity. It has some challenges though. There are some HVAC system issues. There's obviously some upkeep that needs to be done. So in a perfect budgetary world or as far as planning goes, we would be socking, you know, putting some resources aside every year to kind of build a contingency fund that could essentially be doing that. So what we're looking at doing is potentially allowing, starting in 2024, to start building an account that would be used for contingency purposes. The city hall bathroom repairs, again, we've been making updates kind of throughout the years to the building. One of the things we need to look at are the bathrooms downstairs and some plumbing. This building was from 1927. It's doing well, but obviously there's been some issues. So we want to look at kind of handling that and tackling those. One of the things we need to look at in 2025 is obviously a comprehensive plan update. So our comprehensive plan was last updated in 2013. And typically about every 10 years, you kind of want to look at redoing that and looking at the needs of the community and making sure that from a zoning perspective, from a long term planning perspective, we are all kind of have the forward message and the forward thinking and guidance on where we're going. So we want to look at doing that. There are some software updates that we would like to make in the city clerk's office in regards to specifically with council packets and different information and documentation. So that's what that's related to. Our city hall furnace needs to be replaced in 2025. We've got some IT infrastructure improvements we want to do in 2026. And then we're also want to look in 2026 about TIF creation. So in 2025, potentially TIF 5 will be closing. Financially, it looks to be the case, but then we need to obviously discuss the possibility then of creating a new TIF district. So that involves planning with our financial advisors and the creation of a manual and TIF districts. So that's what that is related to. And then in 2026 and 2027, we're getting close to a 200 year celebration. So in 20, in 2027, we'll essentially be celebrating 200 years as a municipality. We didn't always start as a city. So that's something that obviously we want to consider about what we want to do with that and plan. So that's some pre-planning there. So that's kind of the general synopsis of the general government. I guess I'll ask any quick questions there before we head on to the next department. Again, you can ask any questions, look this over. We'll have more questions you can kind of fire at us, but that's general government in a nutshell. Looking at police on page five. Over the next five years, some of the things that they're going to be doing in squad car replacements. So this is something that we are going to be looking at with our enterprise fleet management. Right now, we have it budgeted in there that we are not doing that, but we are seeing more and more municipalities going to that. I know the former municipality, I was in Hobart, up in the Green Bay area, they actually just did this where they actually switched their entire fleet. They're looking to now lease their police vehicle. So it is becoming more common. So that is something we're obviously going to be looking at, but we have that kind of budgeted. Again, looking at as far as the police station, creating a facilities contingency fund. There are improvements with that building now being about, I believe, 10 years old. We want to start anticipating the fact that there are going to be things that we're going to have to start considering replacing. So instead of having to have that be one gigantic item coming up here in the next kind of 10 to 15 years, we want to start prioritizing that. Same thing with portable radios. We wanted to get a little better at looking at replacing those on a more of a rotation cycle. So that's why you're seeing we have about $10,000 being allocated every year. We have a radio system upgrade that I will let the chief kind of briefly touch about here in a little bit. That's about 155,000. Chief McKinley, do you want to kind of give a synopsis about what that is about a little bit?
Sure, that is a developed with jointly with Grant County to develop resiliency in the system so that we would be a complete backup for Grant County and vice versa. If they would go down due to a tornado or anything, we would have the ability to function. And again, vice versa, it's for continuity of operations.
That's a regional expense.
No, this is for the city of Platteville for us.
But it would be a, it's really.
I understand, but it would be a re, it's really for the benefit of the region.
It's
I mean, it's our benefit, but it's the benefit of the region. It's the benefit of the county as well as the city.
It's mutually beneficial. Correct.
So then some other things we have going on in here is a radio repeater. Obviously that's something that we need to update. And then looking at over the next couple of years, some vehicles, the detective car, a live scan fingerprinting system, the task force car, which is covered primarily by other sources. So that is actually not a cost to the city. And then looking at again, updating the CSO trucks and all of these things, we will continue to kind of look at as far as our rentals, our lease system to see if it makes sense to kind of bring those on. So any specific questions there about police before we move on?
Yes.
Yes.
Do we have a detective car already?
Yes.
So this is a replacement 25,000?
Correct.
A replacement. What about this task force car?
So that is the same thing. That is a replacement of a current vehicle that we are using.
And is this replacement with a new vehicle or?
The task force vehicle is funded by our participation in the drug task force. It comes from alternative funding source.
Comes from where?
An alternative funding source, monies donated by the task force.
Okay. And, and the task force is what? I'm not on police and fire, so I wouldn't.
It's the drug task force, the Richland Iowa grant.
Task force. And what is this CSO truck? 2026, $40,000. That replacement or no?
That would be a replacement of our current truck.
All these things are written up later in in the documents here?
Yes. So you will find that each individual kind of section here has a coinciding project description.
Well, you're just going through general here.
Yes. Yeah.
I've looked at someone that's ready so I can check it out.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
Now.
All right.
At this point.
Sounds good.
At this place.
That's okay. All right. So then on page six, obviously is our department of public works. So as you can see with our DPW and our water and sewer, these are obviously one of our more extensive areas within the CIP. Because again, we're dealing with roads, we're dealing with equipment that is high dollar. So this is where you're going to see the majority of kind of our expenses or our planning specifically. So as you'll see in here, we have a multitude of projects in regards to some that are continual. So that would be like street repair and maintenance. That is our wheel tax that we do every year. So that is $110,000 that you'll see every year going from 2023 to 2027. We have the highway striping and the sidewalk repair. Again, that is a consistent amount of money we try to put aside every year as well as alleys. And then we get more into kind of the individual year specific projects. So you can see we've got some individual trucks in 2023 that we're looking at replacing the 2.5 ton dump truck. We've got trail maintenance. We have the Jefferson Street reconstruction, the Soden Street reconstruction. As Barb kind of alluded to, these were some of the projects that are, we're still waiting on for BIL funding. So potentially that could have an impact on the overall CIP as well as the budget, because if we get those funded, that frees up some conversation or that frees up the concept of then maybe we aren't going and borrowing because of the fact that we're getting grant money, things that we need to consider. Again, we have some end loaders, mowers that we need to look at replacing in various parts of the CIP in the next five years. Looking at the potential of adding some additional smart poles now that we've had that. Again, these are all items that potentially will come up in the budget and after we looked at as to whether or not we can financially do that. But something that, you know, potentially has some merit in looking at doing. We have the non-motorized comp plan that we got a grant for that we're going to be looking at doing in 2023. As well then, as in regards to some different, the tire machine, the paint machine, kind of moving into 2024, we've got some leaf blowers that we need to be updating as well as wheel loaders in a couple of different years. We've got more street reconstruction. Looking then at meeting the mini excavator and the wood chipper. Those are conversations again that we continue to look at and talk about in regards to whether or not it makes sense maybe to outsource that or look at different options, cost. So those are things that we're going to continue to look at from year to year. Then there's fuel pumps we need to start looking at doing in 2025 to 2026 and 2027. We've got some reconstruction of various streets. Then again, looking at some other large scale equipment with backhoes that we need to do. As well as again, some reconstruction. Just a little bit of more information in 2023 with the 2.5 ton dump truck. What happened there or that we ran into is what pretty much every municipality is seeing is supply chain issues with being able to get vehicles. So we were supposed to get a dump truck essentially in 2022. That was this year. Unfortunately, we were told basically by all the companies that they don't have any. So one of the things that we're looking at doing is trying to increase that and basically have some funding in 2023. And then looking at potentially getting it in 2024 and kind of adding on to that. So those are some of the things that we're hopeful, we are going to start to see as we get further from the pandemic. That won't be a problem, but that may be a strategy we may have to look at in future years if that continues to be a trend just with the struggle we have seen with trying to get vehicles. It may be something where we have to do multiple years of funding or look at different alternatives to try to get sources there. Yes.
So we, we budgeted.
We budgeted.
So we have that money that hasn't been spent.
Correct. What, what has happened is because of inflation and everything else, the amount of money that we budgeted in 2022 for the 2022 vehicle is not enough. What we're saying is that by the time we get that vehicle in 2023, we need all the money that we allocated in 2022 plus an additional $55,000 in 2023 to actually pay for the truck before it gets here.
And in 2024, we're anticipating needing to do another one because we go in rotations with different vehicles. So that's why we're upping the cost. So this is something like we said, we're going to have to kind of start looking at how we budget potentially when it comes to vehicles, because we are seeing that, you know, our historical amount of vehicles is nowhere near we thought it would be from budgeting. So we're hopeful that's going to go down, but if not, we may have to tweak that strategy and look at doing doing it different. As they say, the definition of insanity is you keep doing the same thing over and over. It's not going to work. So we may have to look at other ways. So obviously, again, this is a lot of information with DPW. So please look these over. If you have specific questions, reach out to me. Definitely we can set up a time with Howard. Go Ken, go.
Okay. When I look at this long list, the question comes up when you read these things, is there enough money to do these things that has been put in by the DPW? How do we know?
Oh. As far as if.
As far as say for 2023.
Yep.
With this list here, is there enough funding to cover this list?
No.
Okay. Now, so how are we going to?
So what essentially happens is.
Weed this out as far as what? So am I supposed to come in and talk to you and say, I don't want this? And somebody else comes in and says, I don't want this?
No. So what we're, right. So what we're going to look at doing is again, with this comprehensive CIP, this shows you the items that we have identified that we should be doing. So if you look at 2023, for example, there is on the bottom, you've got 2022 to 2027 deferred streets. There's about $10 million of streets that we should be doing in 2023 that we're not doing. That doesn't mean that we don't prioritize those. It's again, our DPW has looked at and brought forward, here are the items. Now, as you kind of alluded to Ken, if you're hearing from the community that there are other streets that potentially are Jefferson, Soden, Henry or Grace that we've identified that would be on there. That's part of the formal budgetary, when we go to the actual budget process in October. My plan is to bring this and showcase, okay, here is everything we identified in 2023. Just as you alluded to, are we going to be able to do this? Probably not. But we want to be able to show that and look at every single other department as well with all of the projects that they have and start prioritizing. And it's going to be a list. There's obviously going to be recommendations that I'm going to make as the city manager where I would say, we got to try to fund this, we got to try to fund that. But those are part of the budgetary discussions where if we feel there is, if there is consensus from the council that it should be this project over that, then that's the discussion. What this plan does then is we don't want that to mean then that that just gets thrown in the bucket and we never talk about it again. It's nope, we got to come back and look at that and go, okay, we were supposed to do this in 2023. We did it. The intention now is when we're working on this is to go, okay, this, these, if it's five things, if it's 10 things, if it's three things that didn't get funded. The expectation then in 2024, they come right back for discussion again. And so that way we keep that roadmap and it's not as council members and as staff, we just go, all right, we had a storm sewer project for $25,000 that we were going to do. While we didn't fund it, it's gone. And then five years later we go, oh wait, we were supposed to do that. What did we do? It's again, trying to keep the momentum going of looking at, we understand if we can't fund it, then it's okay. Are there grants we go after? What is it? And how many years do we let that item not get funded before it finally becomes, we can't do that anymore. We got to fund it. So essentially in the next meeting, when if, if, which I'm hoping you will adopt this plan, then that starts the next step, which is we take 2023, the items are in here and start putting it in, in anticipation for the meeting in October. And that's where, that's we have the special meeting where essentially I'm going to make recommendations and I'm going to say this is as a city manager, where our budgetary line item hits and out of that, here's what I would recommend that we can fund. That's obviously the opportunity then in addition.
And at that time, we'll have an idea of the money available.
Correct.
This, this plan has no relationship to what money is available. This is simply.
This plan basically shows you if you were to do what is on here, the only way that is happening as you can see. So looking at 2023, we've got $10 million worth of requests of unfunded streets. We're not funding.
This is a, it's a wish list.
It's a plan.
Correct.
I mean, it's a plan. It's showing you if you were to fund 1.6 million dollars worth of DPW projects. The recommendation of how you're doing that is you are capital project levying 832,200 of that. Now, as we know, as a city, what has been our typical CIP? Now, 700,000, right?
Okay. You say you're going to put your recommendation in. So in past years, your recommendation for the city manager was, was another column over here on the right. So how are you going to present that to us? You're going to give us a piece of paper where all these things are and as to the ones that you agree with?
Right. So what you'll see is when we go into the actual, like we did last year. So we had the 2023 CIP. So that'll be essentially this column. So it's going to show you 1.6 million dollars for DPW where the items that were listed. Based on, as Barb alluded to, then we get into kind of the nitty gritty of, okay, here's our funding ability. And either if you want to fund all that, that potentially means you're then not funding all of this from the general government side, you're not funding it from the museum, you're not funding it from there. Or it's as we said, here's the recommendation. We can't fund all that, but I would recommend you fund one, two and three. You know, that's the question we got to figure out. The reality is we should be doing 1.6 million dollars worth of DPW projects. That's the reality. The financial reality is that's probably not realistic, but we have to show both because we need to make sure we're seeing that so that we don't lose sight of this is reality, this is financial reality, this is what this happens. That's then the argument we start making to the state and to fundraising opportunities to go, we didn't fund this. How do we get that done? Because it still needs to be done. This is a matter of is that five years? Is that 10 years? Is that 20 years? What's the, what's it going to take?
And the other thing is a plan like this gives us the ability, when grants are announced.
Yep.
Like the bill, the, the ARPA fund, additional ARPA funds or the infrastructure law or whatever. I mean, it's not like we have to sit around and dream things up. I mean, we've already documented needs. So then we can take our needs document and send it forth.
Right.
And perhaps be more successful in our ask.
Yeah. I mean, if we're talking about roads, which I think we always have, this now showcases, okay, over the course of the next five years, there's $31 million worth of roads that we can't fund. And I would be hard pressed to find any municipality unless you are gigantic that can fund $31 million worth of road projects. Doesn't mean they're not necessary or that they don't lie to the list. But that's the, that's the, this is what this plan starts to project is to showcase, it's not a question. And I mean, yeah, they all need to be replaced. But the financial reality is we can't do it.
I guess we're moving on to water sewer. Since this is such happy news.
Well, you know, that's the fun with CIP. It's planning, but it's, it's the reality. You know, it's, it is what it is. We have to showcase that. And water and sewer is another example. You know, these are our high level. It's, it's costly. And as we've seen through the pandemic, it's cost even more. With supply chain issues with everything else, that's part of it. So again, they've identified over the next five years, one of the things is, as we alluded to, we have a very successful wastewater treatment plant. It does very well. The PFAS results are no question. The issue with our plan is it's also aging. It's, you know, it was built in the eighties. It was back then. It was state of the art. It still is a very state of the art facility. But now again, the bill is starting to come due on some repair items that need to be done. So that's where some of the things we look at this is what we need to do. So there's project design that we try to do every year. There's water meter replacement programs that we do, trying to create a contingency account. Items for safety equipment that needs to be done every year. And then specifically then we start to get into the projects. So we've got the standby generator design and construction that happens over the next three years. We've got Jefferson Street reconstruction that occurs over the next two years. And then specifically some projects that we would like to look at in 2023, depending on fundraising available, funding available. So that's McGregor Plaza Sewer, sand fill controls, a vacuum that we need to get, sludge burial rehab, digester cleaning. And then looking kind of in 2024 to 2027, we've got the influent pumping design and construction, some sludge clay building, various street projects that we want to do. Again, then looking at the trickling filter, design, construction over two years. Then looking at some of the remaining pumps, looking at the digester that needs to be done in 2025. Again, some street projects, starting to get into 2026 with the RES and WAS pump designs. Specifically then some more street projects and then kind of rounding off 2027 again. Looking at some street projects, starting to design for a new digester and again, more streets. And then again, showcasing the 2022 to 2027 deferred streets. That's water and sewer. Right. Howard, is there anything I missed?
No, just, just the, this last line that he talked about is the corollary to the one that we just discussed on the DPW side. If you, if, if we ended up funding 10.3 million dollars worth of deferred streets in 2023, then the water and sewer would need to spend $7 million to do the corresponding water and sewer under those streets. That, that's how that goes. I wasn't sure if that was clear for everybody.
So then we move on to park and rec. So that's page eight. So as you can see here, over the course of the next five years, some of the things that they would be looking at trying to do are improving the park mowers every year. So essentially with the amount of acreage that we're mowing, takes a toll on the mower. So in order to keep that replacement program, that's something that's been built in. We also want to look at creating a parks playground contingency. So again, starting to look at building some funds so that we can make replacements to all of the various parks that we have. Looking at water fountains, obviously those are continual items that we need to replace every year, look at getting on a better system. The pickup trucks, again, those are items that we'll look at specifically either in the CIP or looking at shifting to the enterprise lease system for cost. There's the silo shelter. So that specifically is looking at Legion Park and possibly working with some other sources of funding there to cover that. We've got an electron.
What does the silo do?
What's that?
What does the silo do?
So at Legion Park right now.
Silos on the farm, but is this a similar silo?
I say it's, it's more going to be designed to look like a silo, but it's actually going to be a pavilion is the best way to put it. A pavilion. So take the current shelter that's in front of the Broski Center. We have a potential donor that wants to look at actually creating a shelter that looks like a silo. So to kind of go off of how the Broski Center has a little bit of a farm theme, kind of building off of that and creating the shelter. So to kind of go off of how the Broski Center has a little bit of a farm theme, kind of building off of that and creating the shelter.
And how tall does that will be? I mean, I used to climb up silos and and work in silos and so.
Hopefully not that tall. So we're going to have it be a miniature sized version. But when we get the specifics, I'll let you know.
So what's going to be in the silo?
Corn.
Corn?
No. I think it's going to be open is my understanding. So they're looking at essentially, it would look like a silo from the outside, but then actually be kind of covered and have a.
Can I walk around in a circle and go up the silo?
Nope, you won't be able to do that. So you'll just be you can walk in a circle if you want, but people may question things.
I'm just curious what a silo shelter is. Who, what other cities have a silo shelter?
Cities have a silo shelter.
Yes, we'd have to Google that.
To do some, I'll have to do some research on that for you.
It's a little strange.
All right. So then some of the other things we're looking at is the electronic access fence. So that is in regards to the conversation we had about the dump site and looking at potentially putting a electronic fence on there so that we can control access in and out. So that is something that we are going to be looking at potentially.
Just a minute. So parks and recreation is in charge of the dump.
That is cool. Well, it's combination forestry. So that's the forestry part of the park.
Forestry.
Correct.
I was trying to figure out how this actually works.
It's just the way our budget throws it in there. So it's part of.
We prefer to call it the compost site, not the dump.
That's true.
Thank you. We used to call it dump smoke.
Good call. It's the compost site.
The compost.
That's in vocabulary. Then some other things, obviously, we need to look at are some updates to Highland Parking. So that was something that based on some feedback that we looked at and ways we can improve Highland Park. Looked at the pool water heaters needing to be done, some security camera upgrades that could either coincide with our project, but we have that in there. So we'll see. That's something that we can look at. Park garage, that's something that potentially is looking at in 2024, the ability to be able to do some things in a heated environment instead of what they're currently using. And then 2025, specifically a skid steer. One of the long term goals that Director Lowell would like to see is an amphitheater in one of our parks. So that potentially is an item we have in there. Some improvements to Harrison Park being done in 2025, looking at a parks utility vehicle, doing some black topping at the pool and then some retaining wall work in 2026. Any specific questions about park, recreation and forestry?
Well, eventually I'd like to find out what the Harrison improvements are in 2025. So do I come and ask you later on in October?
So you can look at that in the next three weeks. And if you want to set up some time, you, I and Director Lowell can sit down and we'll go over that. It should be, there should be some further explanation in the actual project sheet.
I'll go back to that.
Yep. But if not, then yeah, definitely. Both Director Lowell and I can sit down and we can go over any questions you have, Ken. That's the plan. All right, going to the library on page nine. We've got some items that they're looking at doing. So from 2023 to 2027, they do have some technology replacements that they want to do, obviously with being open now for five years. They're starting to hit some of those useful life issues with some of the technology. It's crazy to think, but that's basically how technology goes. Every five years, there's some new something new or something you need to change. So we want to be active on that. There is potentially the community room replacements. So some things that they want to do there. A lactation space potentially in 2023, repainting walls as well. Would it be in five years? There's some maintenance now that needs to occur on that. A floor cleaning equipment that would be utilized at the library. And then looking at 2024 with some workroom expansion and then in 2023, 2025, looking at some door replacements. Jesse, is there anything you missed that you want me to add? Or you got any questions? Fire away. Otherwise, check it out. And if there's anything you need, both Jesse and I to kind of reiterate, we will go that route. Going to page 10, then we have the museum. So some of the things that they would like to be looking at is obviously the parking. So coming here in 2020, this is something that both Eric and I have looked at, it's potentially kind of the long term utilization of the museum and creating parking. So there is the opportunity potentially to purchase a property that is directly near the museum. And then looking at a long term plan that kind of falls into the long term and a capital improvement planning for the museum. So looking over the course of the next three years to try to address that. There's an energy audit that we'd be looking at, try to get some grant funding for in in regards to that. And then slowly starting to look at some improvements that could be made to both the Hammer Robbins Building and the Rock School that potentially would allow for some additional revenue opportunities in unison then with starting in 2024 with looking at potentially some large scale museum renovations. And again, that's all part of kind of the long to a long term capital improvement planning for the museum. But essentially starting to get that on the radar to think about over the next kind of five years here, making some better kind of updates and renovations to the museum. Questions or comments there? All right, then go on to page 11 with fire. So over the next kind of five years, we've got portable radios, same thing, looking at trying to update those every couple of years, doing about five of those. Creating a building contingency fund. So that way then we can also look at potentially funding equipment purchases for the building or updates through that. Again, looking at an equipment contingency fund for the same thing, instead of having to put a massive request in, starting to build some capital there so that we can decrease some of those costs. We have the fire station phase one. So that's where you'll see the $7 million there. And then potentially in 2024, looking at the possibility of an additional 3 million being needed there for the fire station. Those numbers again will get tweaked as we kind of move further along into the concept design, but wanted to get that in the thought process within the plan and also within the council. There is a fire air packs that need to be updated. That's about $371,000 there, which potentially could be funded through grants. Then we have the radio repeater as well as then looking into future years with some extrication equipment, a command vehicle that again potentially could be purchased or rented through the enterprise lease program. The fire department then is going to be looking at a UTV update that needs to occur in 2025. And then in 2026, looking at our severe weather warning system, making sure that that is up to date because that is something we do not want to fall out of compliance or not have work. Then in 2026, we have engine eight potentially needing to be updated. And then tender four potentially is going to be covered by other sources of funding because those are the townships. So that is not a cost that has to occur by us. But being the entity that has that vehicle, we need to make sure we put it in the plan. So that's kind of the fire station over the next five years. And then rounding out the rest of the planner, we've got on page 12, the taxi bus. This again is the two vehicles. It's the taxi vehicles that we look at trying to replace every year for $40,000. And then the bus vehicle in kind of every other couple of years. So we've got one coming up here in 2023 and one coming in 2026. Again, a lot of this funding is covered by grants and other sources. And then our capital project levy kind of maintains the same amount. And then the last piece of this puzzle then is obviously the airport. So we have talked about every year having the CIP project match that they can utilize at $15,000. And that helps them when they're obviously going with the Board of Aeronautics in trying to get matching funds from the municipality in order to meet their criteria, in order to get a lot of their FFA grant funding and federal funding. Kind of our match where we try to do that. So then obviously what is kind of remains here within the CIP are the individual projects and program pages. So this gives you the opportunity to kind of look in more detail in regards to what each of those items correspond with. And then the last kind of piece of the puzzle is what we put together here is looking into the future. And then a lot of those deferred roads and maintenance in regards to what their ratings are in regards to Pazer and when particularly they will come. So again, this is a ton of information that we just flew at you. What we definitely would expect is take some time, look this over. I'll be reaching out to each of you individually to see what kind of questions you have over the next three weeks, setting up individual time you guys want to meet specifically with questions. And then the intention is, again, we would be looking at coming back in the first meeting in September as an action item and officially adopting this plan. Again, by adopting this plan, I want to reiterate, that is nothing, that is not saying that you are, we are going to be funding everything in here. This is essentially what we need approved by the council to showcase, as Barb alluded to. It is our ability then to go for grant funding. It's our ability then to look at kind of a comprehensive project. And if it has the adoption from the council, it holds more weight, obviously with our financial institutions and with those grant entities, because it is, it's the council has reviewed it. They understand that these are some of the items that we would like to be looking to as a city, but there always is going to be the financial official component that plays into it.
Questions? Comments?
I think I'll just close by saying, I want to obviously give a lot of kudos to the staff, obviously to Carol. This is a, it's a big undertaking. It's something that literally we start in May and it continues and it's still continuing. You know, we're still looking at refining things. We're still getting things, but it's a lot of work, but I think it's a lot of valuable work because it really does showcase to the community those items that we're trying to address and how, you know, if we had the ability, here's how we're doing it. But then the next step is to figure out how, you know, what of out of these we can do. So. There you go.
Just a clarification question.
Yeah.
The ranking, I've read through the individual and they all have a number one to five.
Yes.
I'm struggling to find the one to five, except at the end that says ranking criteria for future projects. It's got one, two, three, four. I'm sensing that within the worksheets, a five means immediate.
Yes. So if you.
So it's.
So if you look at. It's a little different, right?
Number one.
Number one usually.
First priority.
Correct. So if you look at in the actual, in the instruction page that accompanies the first part of the CIP on page, I guess if you're looking at that, you got the cover page, then there's page one and page two. It gives you a little bit of a of a table there of the priority. So looking right here, Kathy. This is the, this gives you kind of a breakdown of what that means. So it'll showcase to you a little bit more about the priority.
But but you're right, Kathy. One isn't the first priority.
Correct.
Right.
Five is the first priority. One is the least
Yep.
priority, which is kind of, kind of
Not a counterintuitive.
Counterintuitive in terms of we generally think that a one.
Yes.
Same.
Yep. As long as you're on the same page, five is dire.
Okay.
Okay. Well, everybody has their assignment then in terms of looking at this document. As noted, you can reach out to Adam for a private meeting if you have specific questions about any item, whether it's water, sewer, DPW, fire, police, museum. I'm going to miss something, library, general government. I think I'm pretty much DPW. I think I've got it now. I think I said police. I did. Okay. Adam can arrange that you can also perhaps meet that director.
Yep, correct.
And and get clarification.
Yes.
And this then the next time we'll actually see this is in October.
So the next time you'll see this will be in September to adopt it. And then you will actually see, then we'll kind of do the dirty work behind the scenes to start.
Okay. So the September adoption is the adoption of a plan.
Yes.
The plans can change.
Correct.
So it's not adopting a budget.
Nope, it is adopting the.
I think I've said that so many times.
Yes, reiterating. Correct.
Okay. So we'll see it for the first meeting in September, but then we'll get the nitty gritty of it.
In October.
In October.
Yep.
Okay. So if you, if you, as you reviewed the plan, if you believe there were things that were missed.
Yep.
I don't know how it could be, but maybe there were things that were missed. Or if you think there are things that have been fixed that we didn't know about.
Yep, we'll take it.
Let that, let people know that. And and we'll move forward. Okay. All right, folks, that's the end of our information and discussion items for open session. We do have a closed session scheduled tonight per Wisconsin statute 1985 parent one parent E. Deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds or conducting, conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. And this is again, a discussion of the armory. I would take a motion. I assume this will be a a closed session that will not result in action. So we will not return to open session to and to take action on anything.
Correct.
So this is just a discussion meeting. So I would take the motion to go to closed session. Okay, we have a motion by Jason and a second by Ken to go to closed session per Wisconsin statute 1981 parent one parent E. Collette will vote.
Cop?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Motion carries.